We are here for our work session, January 25th. All board members are present, as well as Dr. Farman and several cabinet members. And we also have you seen Dr. King here from GSBA to present some information to the board about the superintendent search. And Dr. King is just a great resource for us, has been very instrumental in helping us, you know, kind of transition through these past couple, actually years now. And we're really looking forward to hearing from Dr. King. So take it away, sir.
Thank you. As chair, members of the board, and I'm taking care of the department. Who this is not me.
Yeah, you're fine.
And other staff and anyone that might be joining personally. So greetings to everyone. I will have a conversation with you this evening about the superintendent's search process and what the, what is the leading and guiding force and impact, as well as tenet of the process that Georgia School Boards Association implements. Also, the conversation serves as a best practices conversation for superintendent searches. So I would request that at any point, if you have questions or comments, then just let me know that. You do have folders. Folders will serve as additional supporting documentation for when I'm gone. More than enough information there to give you additional clarity and support for what you're going to hear. As you know, in terms of best practices for governance teams, and you know that philosophy, that governing team, of course, is not complete without the CEO, which is the superintendent and the leader of your, of your school system. Likely the most important work that you do as a board is the selection process for your superintendent. So one reason for that, one support for that is really in your required domain. You all have heard those domains before, because you know that you've had other training outside of what we've done with you as an association. But you remember that there were eight domains that we presented to you during training. One of those domains is actually the one that you see on the screen. This was not created by Georgia School Boards Association, but it is in State Board Room. And it pinpoints your responsibility for person name. And your responsibility, as you know, centers on the notion of your staff, which would be classified and certified staff. However, it is the responsibility of your CEO, the superintendent, to bring recommendations to the board in reference to staff that are certified staff and or certified staff. However, it's the board's responsibility to hire the superintendent. The language that you see here, I want you to eyeball it, is just taken directly from State Board Room and also in the law around what you should do as a board, when and if you deem it appropriate and in order to enter into a search process. What you see here states the alignment of the search process. It is board's search and hiring process should be one that such that you enter into what verified knowledge should mean for you in terms of what your superintendent should bring to the table, should be the verified knowledge, the expertise, the skills, any prior form of history, and all of those things that are aligned with the duties and responsibilities, but also align with the school system strategic plan. That is element number one in the domain document. That's what I'll leave with you, actually, in element number one, the whole reference to your school system strategic plan. So remember that your team has worked with your blueprint and your strategic plan in many ways in terms of implementation. So you see here in State Board Room, as you enter into the process of hiring a superintendent or entering into superintendent search, one important piece for building the profile is that you are to ensure that when you build those expectations in your profile, that what you are looking for in that position should be aligned with what you need from a customer standpoint, for this strategic. All right, so what are some advantages that are out there with the Georgia School Boards Association in working with school districts across the state? In your folder, you have a document on the left side, in fact, that gives you an outline, a list of various searches that Georgia School Boards Association has led and facilitated. So you'll see those, and they're typically by year, by fiscal year, and you see those that we've been immersed, immersed in this year. So you see the numbers, well over 300 plus searches, and you see the number over the past couple of years that this association has facilitated. I mention that because the department is of a team entering into this work. And trained department in terms of superintendent search services. GSBA Superintendent Search Services Department is also a member of NAC. NAC is a national affiliate of superintendent searches. You see that up here on the screen as a bullet. Read to you from the screen, but I want to hit the highlight. And if I move too quickly through some, just let me know, I'm happy to come back and circle back to it. But I want you to see the significance of the work that this association does in supporting you in the event that you're going to enter superintendent search. So background information here, experience in doing searches, professional development and professional learning in doing searches. Team just doesn't deliver a process without the team being trained. And a major facet of that training comes from our affiliation with NAC, which is the National Affiliation of Superintendent Searches. So at least each year, annually, the team goes away for training to update and tweak the process that we use to support boards with securing their CEO. You also see here reference to national and state connection. We're connected with over 40 states of the U.S. that are also members of NAC. That means that there's a database that's out there across each of these states where either qualified licensed candidates are within that database. So that means that as you consider the whole notion of state and national, not only does the search facilitated by the association include that state focus, internal focus for how to qualify candidates, but a wide reach across the nation as well. Have in your folders a pretty good update of the list of states that are members of NAC that are also a part of it. You also see a reference to AASA, and this is important because as colleagues and with AASA, Georgia School Boards Association clearly is keenly focused on electing school boards and governance and high performing teams. However, we are also partners and colleagues with AASA. That's the National Superintendent Organization. We also do training with them, aligned with them, focused on what CEOs do in reference to working with boards. And so in addition to the training that we're immersed in, reference to NAC, we also do the same thing from the superintendent entity as well, with the National Superintendent Organization. Matter of fact, next month is AASA's national conference where they roll out new and different ideas focused on what leaders are doing now, leaders that are leading districts like yours, what are the indicators and research around success about that. That helps us as we enter into conversations with you, rebuilding your profile. Of course, boards that enter into this process with the association also receive board government and training. If part of this is that you're going to be working as a team within the parameters around those domains, best practices, all the things that are in research around state governance and CEOs that originally lead certain districts of certain profiles. So you receive board government training with that. That's not something that happens with others that do searches for you. There are other search entities out there, of course, as you know, none of them are official in terms of the capacity to train, create, or answer. All right, I mentioned state and national, I'm going to hit this pretty quickly. So national, related to the AASA connection, which you see there. So my ask, okay, so how is the position posted in terms of that wide outreach? Of course, it's virtual. However, streamlined in addition to just simply being virtual, it's streamlined in reference to going to these particular entities that you see here, which are the foremost and premier entities that are in tune and in touch and keep a finger on the pulse of what's happening in public education, superintendencing, school boards, and see if this is over there, in addition to AASA and NAC. Top jobs that's connected with that, Action Week, of course, Superintendent's Job Board, frontline application tracking system. So these are the things that allow us to have our tentacles out there and make close contacts with that, with how candidates that are highly qualified and ready to come forward to the school district as a national team. So when we post positions, at least it hits these entities as well. State. This piece is pretty self-explanatory, I wanted to mention this because it's likely important. Of course, most districts are very familiar with the teacher Georgia website, where within the state, this really touches any of those individuals across the state that are licensed, certified, educational leadership, certification, of course, and all of the important items that come into play with Georgia Professional Standards Commission within the state, which is the licensure entity to oversee that. You have that connection as well. You see other entities that are listed here, whether it's all, each of the 180 districts in Georgia, so when we post, each district receives this, or you across those districts receive that superintendent's and board's, in addition to all of the universities and colleges. So very deep and wide fashion of what we do here in terms of the national and state piece. Want to talk now a little bit about what does that entail in terms of the announcement. As you take a look at those bullets, we've worked with you to build a profile for what it is that you're looking for in your CEO. But it is that when you build that profile, it is aligned with the research and PCL standards. You can refer to it as industry standards. I'm going to flash those indicators on the screen near the end of this. But this process is aligned with that. I mention that because of one, the first thing, one of the first things that you will do as a board is to complete an item that has standard by standard, where you will answer questions individually around what it is that you think you need to build. For example, one of those items and one of those indicators of course would be experience. So one is licensure, another will be certification. But as you get into the research from PCL and some of the other entities that you see being used, then it gets into teaching and learning, gets into the notion of etiquette, it gets into strategic planning, missioning and vision. Questions about what it is that you feel you're looking for within those categories, whether it's curriculum assessment, teaching and learning, operations, whatever it takes, where you are with strategic planning. Example of that is when you answer, we use strategic planning as an example, once each of you answers questions related to strategic planning, it will allow you to pick for someone who will come in and start a square one with strategic plan, or you're looking for someone that will implement the current plan for five years. Or you're looking for someone that will come in and audit and do a review of that strategic plan to determine what the next step is. You can imagine that with what I just mentioned, three or four different options, boards are not interested in our folders. You are in a certain place in terms of where you are with your strategic plan for example. So when you build that profile, it sends a message to the pool out there within the state as well as nationally, as to whether they feel that they are a good fit. Because if you're at, for example, if you were to say as a whole, once these responses are tallied and we analyze those and send them back to you, we'll give you a bullet or a couple of bullets that state what you said in reference to the analysis. So let's just say you're responsible with your strategic planning indicates that you're looking for someone who can come in and look at the current state of where you are with your strategic plan and begin to move implementation forth from where you are, rather than starting from square one. I don't know which one you're going to choose, that just example. If that happens, that bullet goes into the profile. So once the candidate receives that announcement and take a look at that, they'll take a look at the category of strategic planning and know that that is what you're looking for. Helps that candidate determine whether he or she feels like they're a good fit, they are a good fit for your particular position. But there are multiple indicators, I just wanted to go into that particular example to give you an idea of what that is. So once you complete that questionnaire, link to all of those standards, each of you will do it individually, submit it back to us, we will take a look at that, do an analysis, send it back to you in a document, say, here's what you said, here's what your profile looks like as a result of what you said. Take a look at it, board, come together, tweak, you change whatever you want to modify or change, because it is your announcement, we don't dictate in terms of items like that. But we do provide the parameters for you. Once that's built, that we move forward and prepare an announcement for you, you will give us a designate within the district to provide pertinent, relevant information such as district size, graphics, size, some of the things I heard you mention tonight, giving a great description of where you are as a district, mission, your vision, all those things are a part of the announcement. So when a candidate reads that, they will know the City Schools of Decatur has X mission. And as far as the vision, it inspires to become X, and their description, that comes from you. Also various photos that will give a great example of attributes of your district, that particular designate, Education Department, whatever your board decides, will provide those to you. Once you provide those, then our department then will take that in addition to those other items that I mentioned, like that will turn into required attributes in your profile and preferred attributes in your profile, as well as a description of your district, telling a story about who you are and what you're looking for, with photos that you deem appropriate and aligned to that. Once that happens, we post and we press go. The go means that it instantly go will be before all of those audiences that we mentioned. We will then begin to accept those applications once the candidate's completed those applications. Nothing for you to do in that process, because you will have been in the forefront with the development of the announcement, the profile that's created, and customizing that in reference to those things that you feel are good for the City Schools of Decatur. We have, we handle the accepting of applications, we typically post for six weeks. Some boards might decide that they want to do that, we recommend six weeks. Work with you with that timeline in your folders, you have an example of that.
Question. Yeah, just regarding when you push go on that post, when do you generally recommend that should happen by in order to line up with the recruiting cycle?
That really varies now, especially in the midst of the pandemic. There was more of a cutting drive response to that, but at this point, no. What we're seeing is that there's more movement in districts now, some superintendents are retiring that initially wants to stay in place longer, can, for obvious reasons, deciding that not for them any longer. But it happens now, sometimes it can happen even this year, or it can happen at any point within that contract. Prior to the pandemic and the changes that have come, like usually candidates want to be in the third world, candidates want to be able to start a school with their team. But even prior to the pandemic, that was not always 100% the case. But to answer your question, typically it will be around January, February point that a position would be posted with the intent of completing the process by the initial portion of the summer, beginning July 1. That means that the board will have announced its choice. Remember there is, there are some things in the law that will come into play with that. But typically, you're looking at four to five months to do it, sometimes it's longer, maybe a little quicker depending on how soon boards make decisions on entering. There's some things that you can't, we'll talk about. But again, to answer your question, most candidates would like to start the school with their team, meaning that they come on board July 1 or between July and start the school. For to do that again, you'd be posting around this time to make that happen. Not always the case. Sometimes you have superintendents that are retiring near the holiday season, they're retiring for the holiday season, and they notify their boards, they work together to determine when the posting is done and the amount of transition time for that person, sometimes aligned with the exit of that superintendent, sometimes not. Sometimes boards decide that they're going to secure an interim for a period of time as a candidate. Which it depends on your particular situation and where you are in your particular goals for your time. Of course, we will work with you if you all decide to enter the search process, one of the first things we talked about would be that. What timeline are you considering and what the criteria for opt-in is, what type of time? Other questions or comments? No, that's a lot. I mentioned the posting and beginning the acceptance of the applications. Notice that when we press, say, when you press go on the announcement, that assumes that you're going to go for six weeks. So that means that that position is only posted for a month and a half if you do that. So those candidates will make a decision during that month and a half about the, so they're going to complete an application, then they complete the application and submit it by the deadline. Once it's submitted and completed, then the review process begins. The HR arm of this, our association then begins its work, because once you pass that deadline and X number of completed packets are in, we then notify the board that X number of packets were completed, and we're beginning the review process. HR, faculty, the association begins that work. So you'll know if there are 30 completed packets, then you'll know that there are 30. You won't know who they are yet, but you'll know you know. And it takes another couple of weeks to do that review process, because there's a deep dive that occurs with evaluating, reviewing, and assessing those packets. That evaluation process is aligned with those things that you said you wanted in your profile. The rubric that's referred to is built based on that profile, those indications around where it is. Assessing and evaluating of the packets will reflect that. Those candidates, and I use the term the number 30, you receive 30 completed packets, then you will receive access to 100% of them. Don't hold the packets back that are complete. However, they will be tiered. There will be a category one, category two, category three, et cetera. Category one will be those that mean 100% of, or the vast majority of those things that you said you were looking for in your profile. Category two falls in the next category, meaning majority. Category three will be less. So you'll see all of those and you see those categories. But again, you will see 100% of those packets. You will use that information to determine your enemies. With the number 30 being considered, once we come and present to you, that's an executive session. Tonight, this conversation is part of a public meeting, because we're not discussing candidates. At that point, when we return, once the posting has closed, the review process has been completed, we'll schedule a time to meet with you. You'll post a public meeting, but you'll post it on your agenda, whatever language that you typically use, go into executive session, you will list it as executive session for personnel, purpose of superintendent search. Eight, call it. Go to session, then we present candidates to you. Now you're looking at actual individuals, sensitive information, probably about 30 plus pages of information on each candidate, depending on how intensive they might have been with answering the questions that are there. Some candidates, of course, will be long-winded than others. But other information that you receive in addition to how they answer those questions that are aligned with those indications that we're talking about will be copies of their licensure, all these things confidential, you see the reason why it's a good thing. Also, copies of transcripts. Also confidential records, documents. Those are the things that you will receive and that you will have access to. So in addition, when you see this extensive reference and social media check, all that is part of what you receive in executive sessions for review of each candidate that's in that tier for you in terms of that process. Once that happens, that took a couple, two, three hours for you meet that day or that evening, then you will then go away and enter into your process of the meeting, because you're going to have those tiers. And you will be equipped to go in, take a look at each candidate, you'll have the code, login, secure your code to log in and look at those candidates and determine individually who it is you think that you interviewed in round one. You come back, you sit at a meeting or into the executive session and have a conversation. And that's for you as a board. And each of you will talk about your assessment of what you think you think in tier one, tier two, whatever the case might be, and recommend individuals that you'd like to interview when you come to the center. Once that happens, you will notify us in terms of what you want to interview. We then will schedule your interviews based on your schedule, based on when you're ready to do the first round. Let's say you decide that you're going to interview eight people in the first round, you will know who those A are, you notify us. Your work in terms of making contact with candidates, we do that work for you. Association then makes contact with each candidate confidentially. The candidate knows that you're interested in interviewing them, they know the date, they know the location, we provide all those sections. Of course, recommend that you do interviews in each fight, because candidates maintain that confidentiality up until the time that you may talk about that, for sure. Only item I guess I didn't mention in that is that through that interview process, of course, you're going to have round one, and then you can filter it down to who you want to bring back around to. That's what we do. Typically, there will be at least two rounds of interviews before you get to the point of knowing who you want to hire as your partner. Generally, with a board, ends up the first round of interviews and the decision about who they're finding. What you see here is just kind of a recap of that process. I mentioned reviewing the application packets, reference checks, executive session, prepare you for the interview, I talked a little bit about that, but prepare you for the interview also means that based on your profile and those indicators, we give you, based on that, an item bank of questions that's linked to each one of those categories. The question you, it is your prerogative to determine which questions will be selected for that. But you have the parameters, you have the indicators, so your questions are going to be research-based category. And you also have the opportunity to tweak, change, add to questions, generate new questions within the questions within that category. But you're going to have to reach consensus, well, reach agreement on the questions within the category. Once that happens, you notify us that you selected the questions, we know the number, we hope you know how many that there should be because there's a certain amount of time each and a half for each interview. And in between, uh, you transition from one candidate to another, interviews are in executive session also. But as you transition from one interview to another, then there's the deliberation time you will have a scoring document, caption notes, all those things are also aligned to those indicators. Um, we recommend that you do this on, uh, on duty grounds, away from the office, um, for the confidentiality. You should have to post a meeting and a public meeting to do the same thing I mentioned earlier, uh, also that's executive session personnel for the purpose of searching interviews, and you have to ask them. But by not having it on site, it, this takes you, it takes it away from community and things that could interfere with, uh, candidates' confidentiality prior to the final process. When you actually begin to conduct the interviews down to step five, and you're on the grounds for, for round one, we provide a staff member to facilitate. Because the staff member will know and you'll have a schedule that reflects what time a candidate should arrive and will be checked in, certain area for that candidate to rely, material ready to bring them into the room. That person will assist with that, if the person's on site, the person will deal with you, also with you understanding who's going to ask which questions, et cetera. And all of you will be engaged in that process. You have to determine who's answering. And each candidate is asked the same questions for obviously. Because when you're going through it, doing your scoring and taking notes, it needs to be all the same. So we'll do that for you, walk you through that process as well. First round? We'll complete that, have you developed a schedule, contacted candidate. Uh, one thing you have to think about, um, the national and state outreach results, and many times then individuals having to travel. Part of that will be keeping that in mind as we schedule, will help you with that. Uh, the board has to make decisions about, for example, reimbursing a candidate that travels from the outside, out of the state here to have a conversation with you. And sometimes the board decides to reimburse, uh, that travel one time, and also, um, if necessary, one night's lunch. You will have those conversations prior to, we'll handle that for the candidate. See, step seven, I listed this earlier, have to keep this in mind because one, uh, another huge advantage for working with, um, the association is that everything that you hear me mentioning now, doing the counter has forty thousand foot view, but this is a line embedded through, from a legal standpoint, Harvard and Harvard and Hawkins. So it's, it's, it's a, a line with the legal requirements. Even around interview, because when we prepare you to interview, there are certain questions that you can't ask candidates. You're illegal to do so. So all of that will be part of the preparation prior to you even doing your personal. So you'll know that your questions are appropriate, you'll know how to do that, you know how to go deeper when a candidate responds and you want to hear more, and you can do that. Um, each of you will be asking questions, as I mentioned earlier, but each of you will know which questions that person has. If the candidate, candidate gives a certain response and you want them to go deeper, that's perfectly fine, like you should do that. However, there is a skill to doing so so that you don't feel off in things that should not be. So all of that is handled through us, to making sure that you're aware of that, and any staff member that's on the grounds with you during that first round, we assure that that's something that you remember and that you remember with that. This piece that you hear, that you see is important. Part of the legal aspect of this is that, uh, once you complete your first round, probably complete the second round, or if you'll do a third round, it depends on the pool and all those things, let's just assume that you, you're ready. And you say that you're ready, settled on finalists after the second round. Announce up to three, no more, but you can announce a max. Uh, you can also announce less, if three, if you two, if you want sole final. However, once you settle on who those individuals are, notify us, we then notify the candidate before you do anything further. We notify the candidate to ensure that the candidate still has interest, they will, but that hasn't happened because then you're going to do a public meeting, announce them as a finalist. For obvious reasons, we want to reach back out to them to ensure that I have the data to teach process that. Because sometimes those candidates could be suspicious. Be people that are in social office or, or, uh, leading major schools or whatever the case might be, and they're going to go further. There are certain stakeholders that they decide that they want to alert that that's going to happen before it happens. So we need to give them that out. So we work to make sure that that happens. It could be three, it could be two, it could be one, whatever the case might be, that's what we're going to follow through based on what it is that you say you want. Once that happens, we get to go ahead, green light on the number. You will decide and schedule your meeting. We'll post this, and this is not an executive session. Once you go through all those things I just mentioned, this is going to be your first you're going to post your meeting, you'll post it as a public meeting, it'll be an item on, on the agenda for the purpose of naming your status quo certificate of finalists. In a public meeting, call it all like you always do, and you'll alphabetically name this is more than one, who those individuals are, and then you'll have redacted packets that we provide for you. So once that happens, you announce those finalists in a public meeting, you also vote in a public meeting on those finalists. At that time, we provide those redacted packets for you as a board that you make available to your public, available to your stakeholders. That packet consists of how these candidates answer those questions that I just mentioned that are aligned with those indicators. So it's a very transparent process in terms of your public and your community know, knows what's your profile. What you said is important. You also know is that there is a community input piece that was there too. Uh, I didn't talk about it. But the community input piece, uh, allows the board to post the link. If it desires at the same time that the position is posted, then the community can give input on what it feels should be considered as the board moves forward. That's something that you don't handle, we provide the link and then send it to you. It's then posted on your website in a location where you receive information. And board on, and on schools' websites, on their page, communication page if you design. Those boards posted on their website in the communication area that they push out, and then some, many times, schools have that same site and it's posted on theirs. It gives the community an opportunity to log on, answer questions about those categories we just mentioned and give input. We handle that once it's received. It also tells you X number of respondents, number of parents, X number of percentage with business owners, so it gives you an idea. However, it's not going to tell you who these individuals are. So, but it gives you, if you had eight hundred respondents, um, X number of them were students, some were employees, some were business owners, here's what they say based on each one of those questions.
Final question, are they, is that community input on what we are saying we want to see in the superintendent? Or is that community input on the finalist candidates that we're looking at for superintendent?
This is before you get to the, the, and many times when boards use that information, um, prior to starting the round one interviews, um, because you can post that community input thing at the same time that we posted announcing. Say you posted an announcement for six weeks, you can leave the community input thing out for six weeks if you decide. Then we, at that point, once it's completed, we report the analysis to you as a board. Then when we meet with you and you're preparing to do interviews, you use that in, information that the community has provided to help, uh, so that we develop your questions that you can use. Anytime, that's, that's one example of how boards have done it.
So I know, um, with the last superintendent search, they used, um, a committee that was made up of community members, um, that helped with that interview process. What is, what is GSA's, um, philosophy about incorporating community stakeholders in that process?
We don't incorporate stakeholders in executive session for the interview process. But we, but, uh, leading up to that, have as much input, feedback as you want, but once you go into executive session, it's only in the, in our process.
You had mentioned posting the link for community input at the same time as the announcement, but I, I can see there being value in getting community input to help us even craft the announcement. Like, wouldn't, wouldn't we want? Is there a mechanism to get some of that community input prior to actually even building out the profile of what they're posting for?
You could, you could actually use the features to do that. You could actually, um, launch that link first.
Is there a reason not to? Okay, so what's your recommendation in GSA timing?
Yeah, okay.
Um, so that's going to, that's because you're going to, if you do that, you're going to have to say, you really want to take two weeks for, um, community input. Okay, give the community two weeks to do this first. Well, you got to add that to your time. Not an issue, but that's something that you need to be aware of. And once you do it, the analysis comes back, you have it. Then you could do your, yeah, have to do it also. You could use all of that to determine the profile of how it was found. So, so that's fine to do, we just, we'd have to customize your timeline to reflect that. Um, so let's off with the, um, announcement of your finalists in a public meeting. One finalist, two finalists, three finalists, whatever the case might be, the redacted packets are made available to your public, the public has an opportunity, usually many times you post those on your website also, because you get the virtual link for each one of those. And you have that identified location on your website where any of your community stakeholders can go to your superintendent's search area, and they can see those three finalists that you announced. Four, two, four, five. They can click, open the redacted packet. And that redacted packet has that application, all the application responses, the those indicators, how they responded, they'll be able to look at how that particular finalist, finalist responded, or not. Um, they will also see a copy of that person's resume. Also see a copy of that person's cover letter. But redacted means it won't be identifying personal information, it won't be transcripts even in the redacted packet, the public will have around twenty pages on each of those packets, so it's very detailed information, so, uh, for the, for the.
And when we get, once we get to that point, that's beyond where the community can give input away in, usually you're saying that's done at the beginning. So once we get to the finalists and all of that information is redacted and posted, the community does not give input at that point. Is there a standard for you or?
Decide, if this board desires, when you're at that point, if you want additional input on your finalists, then you can do something similar with that. The thing that you're going to have to handle with that is the same thing I mentioned earlier, it has to be built into your time, you have to account for that. Uh, as long as you do that, fine. Um, once you, once you announce, the clock begins to tick, because notice, you have a fourteen day waiting period after the announcement. You can take as long as you want, but you can't, uh, meet and announce your permanent choice until after the fourteenth day, so on the fifteenth day. You can meet and announce your permanent choice of the two or three. And that's in a public meeting too. However, you can stretch that out longer than that amount of time, and if you want to do another, another version of input and feedback, you're probably, you're probably going to get out the young, um, for additional feedback and input all the time. That's going to require the analysis, you get the analysis back, number of days that you're going to receive feedback, see, executive session to review those packets. That's to help you make a decision on permanent choice. And to also remember that during that time, you're going to have to do it within a period of time, it's also going to allow you to enter into initial negotiations with the candidate, with the top candidate too. Because when you meet after this fourteenth day and announce your permanent choice, you're going to need to be very close already with your understanding of the items in the contract. Probably with that, uh, so all those things are done during that period of time.
Do you provide, like, benchmark services or help for us in reviewing our offerings so that we're competitive and that we have, you know, we have a median with school district, urban school district with five thousand to six thousand students, this is what you'd anticipate seeing?
Yeah, we, we do a salary stat, that's aligned with, um, it's part of what GSA does, that's the Georgia School Superintendent Association work with them. They'll, they provide, uh, licenses that's linked to school size, district size, and salaries that you have.
And it counts also, like, versus urban and, you know, different cost of living environments?
You'll be able to tell which ones, okay, you know, they are, but it won't be that in terms of urban and suburban, but you'll be able to tell because of, you'll know where the issues are located, charted by. Um, so yeah, that will be a part of it, but however, when you enter into, during this period, this fourteen day period or whatever, the number, amount of days will be for you, um, that's when you work with, typically with your legal counsel, beginning negotiations with the candidate. So the candidate also has his or her legal counsel, if they have chosen to, and they work together with you to look at those items that are important in the contract before you have the public. All that's confidential, all in, in before you get to the point of having a public meeting to announce, I'm, I'm sorry, to announce your permanent choice. Once you meet and announce your permanent choice, then you know that you are well within where you need to be as far as all the indications that are in the contract. Again, that's with your attorney, your board attorney, and with the candidates', um, candidates' attorney. Talk about this, Commissioner Harvard, Harvard and Hawkins, thing that I want to bring your attention here will be, um, once that happens that you have settled on your permanent choice, we then offer the ninety day transition facilitated conversation. So once, and that's a part of the process. Uh, so once you've selected the person, based on that person's timeline and schedule, your timeline and schedule, we will come together in a meeting, and that's executive session. As you're talking about, fair ninety day entry that's already there, depends on where you are in the conversation. Sometimes at the public meeting, if it's about process, not about other items in the contract, but, I'm sure it's short, we will typically do a meeting if you are requesting that, that brings that candidate in to talk, to meet with you and talk through those things that you said were important, those things that he or she said were important from, for them from leadership standpoint, and then that person builds a thirty day entry plan based on that. And that thirty day entry is something that's presented to you, you all talk through it, you look at, let's just say the first thirty days, they consist of a listening and learning tool, you know what that consists of, places that the person's going to go, things that they're going to pinpoint. There will also be items that's in the profile that you're going to, you would have said that you feel a, a vast importance to the candidate and now permanent choice, and the person will build into the ninety day entry plan those things. So we'll facilitate that and enter into that conversation. Right, but it is offered. So you see where I'm why doing this certainly would warrant and justify both of your credit. Talk through this, this is kind of timeline, that's key for this, whether, I want to do now, show you, um, examples of what those indicators will look like. Mention a few of those, um, education indicator, one, education, training and license. Mention a few of those, um, education indicator, one, education, training and licensure. Uh, indicator two, experience, um, will be questions that will be answered. Those two indicators, next indicators are taken from the research. Uh, indicator three, each candidate will answer questions in the application package. The same questions each candidate that you will see when I represent to you before you start your first round interviews. You'll see the package, you'll see how they answer provision, mission, belief question, the teaching and learning question, operations management, collaborating and communicating, ethical principles, the education system, personal qualities. Um, then we work to align that with the PSL approach, which language very similar. The ethics and professional norms, core values, equity and cultural responsiveness, reinforcement, community care and support for students, professional capacity of school personnel, meaningful engagement of families and community, operational management, school improvement. Each candidate will have responded to a prompt in each of these items.
And these items will have, will we address each of these categories or items in our survey in terms of what our priorities are? So their responsibility is to be aligned with what we state underneath each of these standards.
And when you, uh, develop your questions for your first round interview, they're gonna be aligned with this. But you can look at these like, attempted to give a sample of that first mission, vision and four thousand. I mentioned, you know, if your priorities are such that a candidate needs to be able to come in and champion the current strategic plan rather than beginning from step one. I don't know what you're going to say, but you answer that question. Uh, and it will be placed in the profile. You will also later, once you review all of those packets, then determine which question you want to ask in your interview that's linked to. How you get into having a conversation with the candidate around your needs in reference to mission, vision, and four thousand. Same thing with ethics and professional, equity and cultural responsiveness, all of those items. You will settle on what you want to ask the candidate and determine the kind of body of information. And these are the things, like I said, it's taken from the research.
What does PSL stand for again?
It's, uh, professional standards for educational reasons. Alright, uh, I know I went through that pretty quickly, but I wanted to try to give you at least the high level indicator, indication of what we do. In your folders, you have more information, supporting information around things that I said. You are a member of the Georgia School Boards Association. As a member, the fee is $7,500, $7,500 because of membership. Um, the only additional, uh, money that could come into play would be, uh, for example, what I alluded to earlier. If you have X number of candidates that you decide that you're going to reimburse in logic, then that's reimbursement. That depends, once you're, it's a way. Ah, then it's not added to it. So knowledge reimbursement comes into play, logic could come into play. It's not happening. Intersect, fact that's also involved in that, because there are locations that you. $7,500 is the base. It includes the base expenses.
The one, so I'm looking at, it's not here, but this page right here, page, we don't have pages, but it's in this little packet. Uh, in particular, the one you said that we might want to consider is assessing the strengths and weaknesses of the school district that the new superintendent will be expected to address. Um, is that something GSBA can help us do, uh, if, if we think that's something that we need to, that process is something we need to go through? But I mean, like more like a structured assessment of the district itself. Is that like, so?
District, where are the candidates currently working?
No, 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 our, so obviously our, for our district. I guess, I, I, maybe I'm misunderstanding this page, but it says superintendent search, pre-search activities. And it is suggested that the board consider the following in prepara-, I'm doing this so people can hear me. I'm talking like a maniac, but, no, you're good. Uh, it is suggested that the board consider the following in preparation for the superintendent search. And I'm, I'm particularly interested in that assessment of the strengths and weaknesses of the school district. Um, that feels like something that we would need some structured help doing, right? I, I don't, letting us do that by ourselves, I just, I feel like there would be more success if we had some structure around that. And is that something that, how does that typically get done? Maybe that's the way I should ask the question.
Through that assessment that you do individually, it's incorporated in that, that, and it's aligned with those indicators that you see there because um, from this standpoint and building that profile, those items are items that are important. And also directly and indirectly related to your strengths. For example, the teaching and learning aspect, gracious management, you answer questions like that. The way you respond to that helps to move in that direction. And once we do that analysis and send it back to you, we'll see what those items are and then we'll give you a bullet that's crossed. So you'll take a look at that and you might decide, okay, I want to make some changes or go deeper, or let's have some conversation about that. That's when we get into asking you certain questions about teaching and learning, if you need more, and what you would answer those. And then we'll help you complete that particular. The answer is yes, we'll have, help you do that, but it comes from that analysis.
So I guess my, my question would be, if for example, I don't have a background, I'm just a dad. I don't, I don't have a background in teacher or education, right? I'm fine on budget to the, you know, distress, I think, of the superintendent. But in terms of, uh, in terms of teaching and, and education, I don't have the expertise to evaluate where our system is on that front. So like any answer I gave you, I'm probably the least qualified person at this table to do that. And I'm not sure, I mean, do you know what I'm saying? I'm just saying it feels like there's questions on that assessment that would require some level of expertise to assess that you don't necessarily expect board members themselves to have.
Right, staff members that would be with you in executive session and have those conversations. That point when we're doing that, that's executive session.
Okay.
Now you're building that profile. Now you're getting into personnel. Um, but we'll have conversations with you about each one of those. Some of those you won't have questions because everybody's on the same page and you're good. But in areas where you do have questions, we'll tell you what your analysis indicated. And if you want to go deeper or need to go deeper, we have staff that will tell, will assist you. But it's a, it's a in-person, face-to-face discussion around those indications. People that are knowledgeable of curriculum and assessment.
Um, totally unrelated question, and looking at the list of searches that's been done by GSBA, they're very diverse. You have some rural, metro candidates, states that are well over 100,000 students. So what do we do to ensure, or what has been GSBA's track record in making sure that we get a diverse candidate pool? So one that meets the, um, the racial demographics that we're looking for in our school system, age, gender, gender identity, that sort of thing. Um, because all of these schools look vastly different.
Um, in the outreach that we provide, it is intentional that those partnerships are amongst very diverse entities. Like for example, when we mentioned that connection, that's a very diverse connection. Um, alternative candidates, male, female, candidates of color, white candidates, et cetera, across those schools. And those are things that NAS, the National Affiliated Superintendent Searches, they're focused on, ensuring that that happens, um, within the parameters around which appropriate. And also doing that with A, partnering with A, SAA, SAA's website have very deep, higher in connection and think with equity, social emotional learning, diversity inclusion, teaching and learning, all of those things. But also, um, aligned with ensuring that candidates can emerge in those things that are important to step forward. So because of our outreach and partnering with those entities, it's working to ensure that you get a. Nothing's gonna be better than the. That's what's gonna really tell the story. They'll see, focus on diversity, focus on, focus on teaching and learning, focus on rigor, eating standards, all those things, and tells that story. So all of that can lead.
Going back to your, the interview process. So you said, once we start round one, two, or have any last week to start, those would all be executive sessions? So, so only board members would be able to.
If you, you know, you enter into the thing you just mentioned, you use the term transparent throughout, will even have reported back to your community, um, if you do this, if you opt to do the survey. They'll see their responses. They'll see, here's what the community said, here's how many responses, um, yeah, total. And they'll see how the community responded. Hey, and it's your response, and you're gonna use that information as you make decisions. Interview questions. And, so they'll see them, yeah.
And a follow-up on that, so what have you seen as far as COVID is concerned with the pandemic? Around one, done virtually, um, more so, I know at that point you didn't want it to be in person. Have you seen that change because of the pandemic or?
Yeah, um, some boards have opted to do round one virtually. Very quick to help you with that if you decide to do so. But even if it is virtual, it will be, it will also be like a session. Same thing comes in play, it's just different security mechanisms that will have to be. On board. So some boards have, for, here recently, um, not as much. They have shifted a little bit, um, our, for decision at the board. Some boards have done the personal, in-person interviews with candidates that are local or within the state. And extended virtual opportunities for any that they continue. Who have decided that's not, they'll be playing field for them. They're gonna see everybody face-to-face, or they're not gonna see everyone face-to-face. But rather than see some in-person, some virtual, they don't. So what I will say is that, we see examples of boards that might consider doing that first round virtual. Once you get to the point, second round, it's not, it's not. You're doing 100% virtual, first round, second round, making decisions by the time it's down someplace. But we can see that by the time you get to the point of second round, you will have really done. Not the same number of people coming in, that kind of thing. So you feel really confident and safe about, well, the candidates before you said, to do that. So, but, so we're, we don't recommend that a board enters into this process with everything virtual, way to the point of the.
My, my only question is, are we, um, can we post this free on our website? Catch with the work session, recording?
The PowerPoint?
Yeah, PowerPoint.
And, I mean, it's a public meeting, it's online, so they have access to it anyway. So, try to do, though, we do this in the public, we try to make sure we maintain approach and integrity for what we're doing. As you can copy that. So that's all we have, that's just, yeah. Talked about an hour or so, pretty much asleep.
So, we'll talk more to the board on, on our next, um, set size of cabinet information. I want to move forward.
Thank you, my pleasure.
Thank you, Dr. Harland.
I think I was breaking.
That's right.
Before we move forward, um, with that. Have a conversation about what we want to do next in terms of, um, I was suggesting that we put um setting this on the damage for the next um board meeting on February eighth, um, when I say this, putting, you know, the second G S B A when they want to move forward, um, just using them for a superintendent search, um, so just wanted to get you all thoughts about that. Are we, we, we're, we're. So we would interview others, you're happy?
Well, we can discuss that now too, um, because we're not gonna vote on what we want to vote for with the S P A now, um, but we can discuss that now. Consider other um consultants.
You know, when we first talked about it, um, not sure what the timing is gonna be, and now it's a little bit of a better idea. Just wondering if we want to. Another consulting company, so we have some things to really compare and contrast, um, like what's important to us. Or was timing, it didn't make sense, but now, um, back to that. We're getting everything going.
Historically speaking, would have been the advantage using a private consulting firm. I think sometimes it's, you know, national reach, or it's, you know, specialization of people doing the consulting, um, you know, obvi- obviously it sounds like um T S B this is fine, so I think this for discussion purposes. If.
I don't know, wasn't part of the last search, um, I know, you know, I was appreciated hearing Dr. King discuss how they do, they have these connections in order to um reach potential candidates nationally, um, just from other conversations that we had as a board, seems like G S B A very affordable, um, but I don't know much about it then.
In theory, would our research firm, when you want them to aggressively go after a particular set of candidates and make them aware of it, who may not search it, but that's I don't know such a thing.
And I don't know if it's, and I'm only asking the question because I don't really know myself, I wasn't part of it, kind of on the back background, um, didn't have, I wasn't pretty to be executive session, portions of all of the search before, um, and so I guess for me, it would be like hearing what they would potentially or could potentially offer, that G S B does, G S B doesn't, or diff- how does it differ? Or we may see that they're very much alike and very much aligned, and it may affect them, so yeah, I I wouldn't, I don't know what the benefit would be. But just in this terms of having some time now, that we can really take a little bit more time for that, that, that portion of it, I was just wondering, you know, what everybody thought about, about bringing that back, bringing that back on the table.
So logistically speaking, um, would that, that presentation have to happen in a work session, right? Like, so we're talking about.
Or a public meeting.
Or we could just do another special public meeting.
They could come to a public meeting.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm a little sensitive on, on timing, I know we, we got a little bit of additional time, um, but I do also know that we've been pretty clear in communicating to public that we want to be thorough, comprehensive, thoughtful, and I tend to align with. From some other, like, just, I would expect the other firm to be able to answer Harmon's question, why would we go with you instead of G S B A? Um, I like, I mean, I like everything that G S B A has put in front of us, so this isn't definitely a disappointment with them, this is more, I think, it favors us to be comprehensive on this, but I also don't want to take a couple of extra months to be comprehensive. I would think a special meeting and get some folks in as quick as possible for us to ask those questions and hear would, would behoove us, I.
But potentially you could um have a specially set work session, maybe we have multiple presentations in one session, I think that would be the only purpose of that session.
That makes sense too, yeah.
But just so we can really sit down and compare the three and say, okay, what, what really feels good and makes sense for what we're looking for.
Do you think it's, are, is it possible to do that so that we're still ready to have a conversation on the eighth, or do you think that's way too short?
What's going on on the eighth? I thought we were, she was on the twenty third.
Is it?
The, the next one, I think?
Yeah, because, because of winter break, we have, um, I believe it's gonna be the third, third Tuesday.
Next, next year, this one is on the eighth.
Oh, that's next year.
I was looking, I was looking ahead, right, okay.
Well, it'll be, it's there was, we've made some edits.
Oh, I, that might be kind of challenging.
That would be challenged on the eighth.
Um, so I mean, we, we don't, I don't know if the eighth, I just wanted to get you all insight on, you know, how we wanted to move forward, so we can, um, some research on other consultants, and um if we do another, uh, we do a specially set meeting, it may be on a Tuesday, um, starting around five thirty.
I think a specially set session is probably a better idea, otherwise we're gonna end up kind of spiking off time for other things that.
I would also want to request that we, if we don't do it in February, we definitively do it in the March, like, we put it on the agenda for the March. Yeah, let's make sure that we're capable to make the decision by March, so we do this in whatever time we need to do for that.
That's it for me. That topic.
That's for me. Okay.
Yeah, sorry. Um, okay, so part of our budget planning process is to discuss and present to the board our staffing allocation plans and have a discussion around this if you've got questions. So our agenda for tonight is just to give some touch bases to our foundational work and what we focus on as a school system, talk about the budget priorities that we identified a few months ago, um, a quick review of our budget calendar, so you can see where we are, where we're going, um, then do a quick review of our enrollment projections, then I'm gonna talk about our current staffing allocations, so you can kind of see where we are with what we get allocated from the state versus what we use in our schools, what the impact of that on our overall budget, I'm gonna share my proposed staffing allocation plan, and then have some opportunity for discussion. Jump right in. So in C S D, we know our vision is to build the foundation for children, to be their best, achieve their dreams, and make the world a better place, and we do that through hiring amazing staff in our building. And I can tell you, as I walk through all of our classrooms, and visit with our teachers, they are making this a reality for us. And we also have our core beliefs about our educational equity practices and what we believe we will look like when we achieve educational equity. We've identified key priorities to help us move in that direction. We also have a theory of action that we use to promote leadership in our schools and our teachers, to make sure that we are providing highly effective instruction for our students. And all of that goes into our framework for equitable outcomes for students, where we believe that through stakeholder engagement, with transparent communication, and using our core pillars, advancing racial equity, accelerating student learning, and building and sustaining a positive culture and climate, we can achieve that vision and mission that we have for our school system. And these plans have been in place for several years, we are getting the results, and we want to keep moving towards these equitable outcomes that we're seeking. Uh, so in our initial budget meeting several months ago, we had identified three goal areas, some performance objectives and priorities for our budget for the upcoming year. Uh, so in the area of equitable outcomes for students, we identified increasing student achievement, paying the educational debt to our students that are, have been historically marginalized, and enhancing mental health support. Two of the priorities were increasing the number of counselors and increasing equity personnel. In the area of rewarding and recognizing our staff to attract and retain a diverse staff of exceptional quality, we discussed competitive pay for staff, we discussed building staff capacity and ensuring we have a pipeline for advancement, and the priorities there are competitive compensation and making sure we have rigorous staff development opportunities. And in the goal area of operational excellence, we identified objectives enhancing the safety and effective learning environment for our students, as well as maximizing our financial stewardship and increasing operational effectiveness, efficiency, um, and here we want, our priorities are making sure that we are good stewards with the finances that we've been entrusted with by our public, and that we have a safe and secure learning environment. So our budget calendar, as we go through, we're gonna fill in the dots where we've finished, um, and then look ahead at. So we've done our budget priorities, we've done the compensation study, we've done the budget primer, and this is our initial allotment presentation and forecasting. Uh, Lenita and I talked about a change, we weren't going to have an initial proposed budget for February eighth, but based on the changes that we're seeing in the budget from the state, we want to analyze those with the board and present a little more information about how it's gonna impact our current budget, because they are creating changes in our current budget, as well as forecasting what are the changes and implications we may see in the budget going forward. That will give us time to really have a solid budget preliminary draft for our March eighth meeting. Um, at March twenty second, we'll do another one, because as we get feedback from the board, we'll bring back at the March twenty second work session, another draft of the budget, so that we can tentatively approve our budget on April twelfth, and then we start our, our budget hearings in May and do a final approval. If we are changing the mill rate or have to do an effective change of the mill rate, um, those are the mill rate hearings that we hold in June.
Yeah, go ahead.
That's because they're discussing kind of in this current year, getting rid of the austerity.
Yes.
And when will we know that does or doesn't happen?
That's gonna, it's, we're not really sure yet, it's kind of how staff things can go through the hearing process at the, at the Golden Dome, um, and it's not just the austerity being recompensated, but the bonuses, quote, like, that are being added for staff this year. So we've got to figure out and ask the board, do we want to do, they're doing two thousand dollars for teachers, do we want to do two thousand dollars for everyone, or just teachers, or two thousand for teachers and the one thousand that they're proposing for.
Yeah.
Studial and, and school nutrition staff. So we'll have a outline of how that will impact our current budget and forecasting what we anticipate for the twenty-three budget.
Okay, so even if we don't have an answer by March, you'll have a.
Yeah.
If this, then this way, and if not.
And so there will be a if we get none of it, and the austerity goes forward, kind of the worst case scenario, what we have to prepare for.
We should know pretty well what's gonna happen for this year's budget to prepare for the February eighth meeting, but we'll have like option A if this happens, then use option B, yep.
So I was gonna ask, when do we anticipate starting to see our feedback and questions and, and desires in the budget to show up?
Starting now, so as you were, as I've been hearing, what you've been sharing about desires and proposals, as we shared a few months ago when we did the initial priorities work, um, we started implementing these, and that's what you'll see as I go through this presentation with our staffing allocation. That were linked back to these priorities identified a few months ago.
I mean, we had feedback on some of those priorities, and I just didn't see it, so I guess that was my question, when we were asking questions about, you know, like, for example, a budget priority on increasing the number of counselors, that's a very clear line, like, one, it's this, if it's eight, it's this, like, you understand? But when you say financial stewardship, I don't know what that is, right, like, that isn't the number, do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So I just, because we asked that question before, and, and so that's where I'm asking, when do we start seeing it show up, you see what I'm saying?
So financial stewardship, to me, is doing the best that we can with the money that we have, which means we're creating a balanced budget. So that is where I'll be leading the district, is to make sure that we are presenting a balanced budget, that is using the most, the resources that we have in the most effective way, and I'll try to highlight that as we go through.
Okay.
And then a lot of other this will come up as we give you the presentations of the budget.
And, and the audit, as you.
Yes, the, you mean the audit for Central Office. Does that help, hon?
Yeah, the other thing that I was gonna ask about was the, the, I guess this is the conversation to have with the group, the conversation with Dr. Banks around, um, some of the ISS stuff, I don't know, because I just heard that it sounds like we have done some of that, I guess, so I, you know, obviously don't want to pay for something twice.
Yeah, and that would be a question, if we want to add that to the February eighth board agenda.
Got it.
To give kind of an update, um, that, about, you know, I know there's little things that are coming up, hey, let's do this, hey, let's do that, I would refer us back to our strategic plan that we have in place, we're moving forward in a positive direction, I don't want to rush something before it's time. That, that would be what, you know, Lily and, and Mary and I've talked about it, we know that there are some things that are coming up, that are like, hey, we should do this, we should do this, those are things that are in our plan, we're moving towards those, and we would caution the board to try to force those things forward before we're ready as a full.
I have said.
No, 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 the, the, um.
The curriculum changes.
Oh.
Yeah.
Is that what you mean by paying educational debt? Is being colonized in the.
That could be one of them, yes, mm-hmm, yes.
I just, the pressure that I, the, 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 the reason why I'm applying a little bit of pressure here is just that I know, we hear a lot about that happening, and then that it's in the plan, but I, I just want to make sure that it's not continued to be kicked down for the next budget, for the next budget, for the next budget, like, if there's a, you know, it would be nice to know, what is the date that it's gonna happen?
Lily and Mary, I'll work with them, and the board wants to add that to the agenda for February, we can add that.
Okay, because, um, I know I mentioned, after talking to Hans about that, about possibly having a work session, or. So that the work session or having a.
We could do, we could add. Work session, wouldn't be. When it before, we're really making budget decisions.
Right.
Um, we would try to do it at the February work session.
I, I would ask for that, just because I, I. They put together, I don't want to be blowing or pushing to blow something up that you really have put in place, out of my ignorance of it happening.
Yeah.
So for us to understand where we are in that, and when.
Particularly around.
Particularly the ISS part of the curriculum, yeah, uh, yes, and, and, um, understanding if it hasn't happened yet, or if it hasn't fully happened yet, what will it take, and when is that gonna happen, because if that's happened in future budgets, we also need to know, right, about, about that. Uh, but also with the respect that we're not trying to blow something up that's in, you know, in flight.
And just to clarify, are we talking about individuals and society?
Yes, okay. I don't want to call it social studies, it's troubling.
I am, okay, I am, okay. Um, okay, so just to give the board, just a reminder of where we are with enrollment, um, this is historical enrollment over the past years, and this graph, sorry, read backwards, so the twenty-one, twenty-two school year is the one you see on the far left, seventeen, eighteen, so you see we did have a history of growth, um, and this is five-year projection out, um, and we are seeing that we are tapering off in projected enrollment. Um, and I've been meeting with other area superintendents in the, in the area, and they're seeing the same thing. I've asked them about their five-year projections, and they're also seeing projected decreases in student enrollment, so we are in line with what we're seeing in other districts.
A real quick question on those, that that decreases, that that incorporates the, like, some of the losses from COVID and then regain it from that?
It does, it kind of is the cooperative strategy, it does our. It does, it kind of is the cooperative strategy, as does our analysis, is like, is that still kind of the black box that they're not sure of? The Tater, we recouped almost all of our students we lost from COVID. So we have very few students that opted not to come back this year.
That's really great news, actually, we should celebrate that with everybody, yes.
And this just shows you at our K2 level, what the projected enrollment is total. And this is in our schools, our 3-5 schools, we see that continued pattern of decrease in enrollment. Same at our middle school. High school kind of has this little bump as some of those bigger class sizes kind of matriculate out. So I wanted to walk the board through our allotment. So what you see on these graphs is this, blue lines represent the number of staffing allocations that are earned on our FTE, on our QBE allotment sheet from the state based on our FTE. So the red one is what we use at our schools. So you see that there is a pretty drastic difference, and this is K2, at our classroom teacher allotment. So we are using more teachers than were allotted from the state, which is not necessarily a bad thing. It's just what it is. We know that we have several factors that we value in our school system, one of them being smaller schools, local schools, where that comes at an increased cost. Part of that increased cost is increased staffing allocations at various schools. So like I said, this isn't, not to highlight that it is a bad thing, but what it does tell us is that we are going to have to rely on as a district, increased local funding to make our system continue to work. This is to show you the comparison that is between the teaching staff at FAVE and Tally. You can see the same pattern. This is for Renfro and the high schools, you'll notice the same pattern, but a little bit less. So our high school and middle school are operating technically what you may call more effectively or efficiently because they're bigger. And when you have a bigger school, you can make more out of the staff that you have. I also wanted to highlight some of the areas where we see the biggest difference. And again, this isn't bad, it's just to help highlight, as we are planning for our budget, we've got to take into consideration, what are we asking for local funding versus what we have been getting from the state? See, this is lower elementary EIP teachers and this does take into account the additional staff that was funded through CARES. So you can see there is a significant change versus what we earn versus what we use. And part of this for me is trying to help our schools understand how to schedule their students most effectively so that we earn more FTE. The way an FTE credit is earned is through the scheduling. And if there are six segments of FTE, or six segments in a schedule, that adds up to one FTE. There's allocation formulas based on this, so then those six segments, they form an FTE and then the FTE, so many FTEs allocate a teacher for you.
Your one was an EIP, what does EIP stand?
Early Intervention Program.
Yeah, and then I was just noticing that it's a quarter of a person that might claim.
Correct, yes, it is. So the way the state allocates is solely based on a ratio. And it does create fractions. They don't allocate full staff in any way, shape, or form. It is strictly by the ratio and you may get .25, you may get .37, that's how they allocate those points. We see the same pattern here at FAVE and Tally Street. Another area that we fund a lot locally are our special teachers at our lower elementary. Part of the problem with how we have organized our schools being K2 and 3-5, kindergarten students don't earn any FTE for special teachers. So we only have two grades earning FTE at the lower elementary, funding our special teachers at the lower elementary. So that significantly impacts the amount of QBE allotment that we're earning at our lower elementary schools. So you can see this, that we offer art, PEE, music, Spanish, those four. So we'd like to keep our schools with their teacher home at their school. We don't want them to have to try to split a schedule and go here and go there. But we've got to make sure that's our value, we're going to have to make sure we have local funding because we're not going to earn it at the state. This is specials at the upper elementary, so for FAVE and Tally. I also wanted to highlight our gifted, we do fully fund gifted teachers and go above what we're allotted as a district for gifted teachers at our lower elementary schools. And this is another one that's really earned through how we schedule our students in the gifted program. So to me, we want to make sure that we're looking at our schedules in a strategic way to maximize that funding that we are earning for our gifted allotment. The good things about gifted is as you, in the upper grade levels, in middle school and high school, we significantly out-earn gifted versus what we have by teachers because of how we schedule those students. So that really helps the high school and middle school. It's not so helpful for kind of evening this out at the elementary school. Also wanted to highlight counselors, again, you'll see here, because of the formulas that they use from the state, we earn fractions of counselors. At most of our lower elementary schools, we never earn a full counselor, we staff a full counselor there. FAVE is really the only one that actually earns one-for-one counselor for what they have. But a need that Karen had put in one of her budget requests is another counselor. She's finding the need for that. Tally, they earn a little bit more than one, they staff two, and you can see that relationship at the high school and the middle. World language, I did want to point this out, the state doesn't allocate us any world language teachers. We fully fund locally our 12 foreign language teachers at our middle school. That is part of our IB program, it's part of what we value. But I did just want to also point out to the board that that is something that we are funding locally pretty much 100%.
Just really quickly, and the last one on the counselors, this is this year's reflection and where are they going to go up next year?
This is where we currently are, just so you have a good idea of our current staffing versus what we earn from the state. Middle school RAP, this is a remedial program and this is what we earn at each school versus what we staff at the middle school and the high school. Early intervention changes at the high school and middle school. This is overall, so all of our schools, and this does not include college heights, they do not get any allocations from the state. That is totally locally funded and funded through tuition. So at our local schools, we are, from the state, we earn, it's a little, I rounded it to 354, but we are staffing locally 473, just so you can see that overall difference. And again, it's not right or wrong, it's what we value, it's what we've been using. And can we continue to sustain that as we look at our budgeting process? Did also look at central office staffing. Central office staffing is very different for how the state formulates this. So they provide us operational fundings of 71, about $71,000. That's supposed to pay for five bus drivers and five bus replacements. So we know that that is way underfunded, but that is just a cost that we have to encumber. Central office staffing, this is what we earn as a staff. They allocate staffing, one superintendent, four assistant superintendents, one administrative assistant, one accountant, five site techs, those are, that's the team that works with us then and we put out in our schools, two, just about two and a quarter social workers, two and a quarter school psychologists. And then based on our numbers and segments and special ed, they also allocate us additional special education administrators. And then they provide us with $117,000 for nurses, that probably doesn't even pay for one of our school nurses. So that is another cost that we encumber as a district. I did gather this graph up and I wanted to share, this is central office staffing. So we have 224 staff, central office. But of these 224, 145 of these staff are in our operations department, custodial, maintenance, school nutrition workers. So that's the major portion of our central office staff is in our operations. These numbers here, it says operations, that's the school nutrition program. And there's several lines of these because that's where they're housed. So there's a Tally School Nutrition Program, a Decatur, a Renfro, a FAVE. So that's why those are separated. This is 55 in operations, the majority of this is custodial staff. So of these staff, of these 224, 79 of these staff are kind of office staff, federal program, community.
Thank you. Quick question, when you're talking about partial FTEs here, you mentioned that it's based on a ratio. My first question is, that's a state-based ratio? And then ratio of teachers to students in the classroom, is that what you're meaning?
Perfect, the state level is for FTE. And the FTE technically means a student, but not necessarily. Because if we're not scheduling in an effective way, we're not earning full FTE. So at the high school, we have 24 unfunded FTEs, which means that we've got classes where the schedule's not lined up the right way, so we're not earning any FTE because of how those students have been scheduled. And the ratio, so the state ratio for kindergarten is one teacher per 15 FTE. So they are saying a 1 to 15 ratio and plus you earn increments of allotments at kindergarten for parapros. So there is a whole formula allotment. It would be great if we could do funding match for match, 1 to 15. But we know you've got to pad those numbers a little bit to add funds to pay for the bus drivers, to pay for school nutrition workers, because they don't allocate those funds on a per pupil basis. Well, they do on a per pupil basis, but it's still minimal.
And we get a snapshot of what this looked like five years ago, three years ago, and now?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
This is, this is one of the areas where a substantial amount of increase in cost has come from. And so it would be good to understand, so some of that is Tally coming online, some of that is additional space at Renfro and the high school. So there are going to be reasons why there is a change. But I'd like to get an understanding of it historically as we start taking a look at areas for efficiency.
Yep, and I know they did a presentation of this, not last year, the year before, so I'll dig that up.
My question for Lenita still stands on taking a look at the last several years historically broken out by instructional, operational, so it would be, I think, helpful for us to see that over the last couple of years to know where the real changes have happened.
You can actually get that, it's online at the Georgia Insight. You go to Georgia Insight, there's a financial effectiveness.
It ends in 2019, so they haven't, they don't, they're terrible about keeping that fully updated, up to date. So I built it myself, but I'm a nerd, just need something that maybe I want to look at.
Okay, so the financial implications, I've been, you know, turned kind of a confluence. I don't know if you've ever been to Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, this is a snapshot of downtown Pittsburgh. I'm going to have to plug Pittsburgh when I can. Downtown Pittsburgh, the two rivers come together and form the Ohio River. So Point State Park is down there at the Confluence. And we are really at a confluence with several compounding factors implicating our budget going forward, not just for 2023, but for the future. So one of these factors is our budget, our fund balance is projected to be lower than recommended at the current spending rate for next year. We see our enrollment decreasing, which means our FTE is going down, which means our state funding will continue to go down. We did hire additional staff through CARES Fund, those are rolling back in the FY '23 budget onto our general fund. And we'll see, and Lenita has shared and I'll remind you of what this looks like, but we have spent more per student than we've been bringing in. And then also this value of local schools, local small schools. So these issues are all coming together at a point where we need to take some action or we're not going to be able to sustain a school district financially. So just as a reminder, this has been our fund balance decrease and it is decreasing over time. We've been spending more than what we bring in. And next year, if we don't take some corrective actions, we will have a fund balance that is below the recommended percentage. Again, just a reminder, we are seeing decrease in enrollment over the next five years. A reminder of the 32 staff that we funded through CARES, that's about $3.2 million, that is going to roll back to our fund. And also just to, this is one of, I'm so glad Lenita did all these amazing flags, I was like, I'm taking that. A reminder that over the last four years, we went from spending less per student to spending more per student than we bring in. And again, that, we went from 1,073 to 634 because we moved a lot of staff temporarily into CARES Fund, knowing that they have to. So I looked at all these numbers, looked at what we can sustain as a school system and have proposed some solutions. And I'm going to go through these with the board and then I'm interested in. So first of all, we have frozen all hiring at the Wilson Center. We have several vacancies in upper level positions that we are not filling at the current time. We are going through an audit at Central Office that will look at our staffing. So we'll look at our staffing per student, it will look at our organizational structure. And then the group that's doing this audit will present their findings to the cabinet and then we'll share those with the board at an upcoming board meeting. Implement, so implementing a different staffing model is one of the recommendations that I feel we need to do at this point to present a balanced budget for our school system and be financial stewards to the taxpayers that are in our system and paying these bills. So, but we need to transition to that staffing slowly. We can't just rip the Band-Aid off. We have high-quality staff, we have an excellent classroom experience and we want to maintain that. So this transition needs to happen slowly over time. So what I'm proposing is we create our, we put our new staffing allocation plan in place. And then at each school, so we saw those numbers where those funded staff versus the state-funded staff versus the locally funded staff were over, there was a difference. So let's say Claremont, they are allotted at the state level, let's say 60 teachers. Well, they've been using 26. So that means we've got to find 10 teachers, what to do as their enrollment is decreasing. So not only are we looking at trying to close this gap, we are anticipating that gap getting bigger because their enrollment will be decreasing over time. So the plan is, we know that we're going to have about 5% to 7% of our teachers' attrition is based on retirement or making life choices and changing positions. So looking at how do we take this opportunity to start creating what I'm calling a district roster? So at Clare, I'm going to keep using Claremont, so let's say Curtis at Claremont says, okay, I'm allocated, let's say, based on the new formula, 22 points. So now instead of having 10 excess teachers, he has four excess teachers. Those go on to quota district roster. But we still then allocate those teachers back to Claremont. But what we're saving here is that as those other positions open up, we know we have this whole list of teachers that we can start plugging back in as positions come to open over time. Instead of bringing in new staff and always opening and hiring, we can have staff that are not necessarily 100% in a solid position at a school. I don't want to take a kindergarten class and then if a teacher retires, dissolve that class and spread those kids around. That's what I'm trying to avoid with this plan, is to create consistency for our students in the classroom. So if we have a district roster of staff that are doing certain types of interventions or providing extra support, when that kindergarten teacher retires, we can take one of them off and put them back in that kindergarten classroom to fill that opening when those happen over time. And like I said, if natural attrition happens, we can take and decrease the district rostered staff, put them back in on the school rosters. The other thing is, one of the things we want to prioritize is how are we paying the educational debt to our students? So there's a plan here for some innovative staffing from these district rostered teachers. So not adding additional FTE to our allotment sheet, but saying of these teachers, that now we've transitioned to a district roster, is there an opportunity for some of these teachers to teach in a different way that can support our students to where they need to be supported? So this is the class, the model that I came up with. And it just, it does increase our class sizes a little bit. So at kindergarten through third grade, those have typically been funded at 1 to 23, or 1 to 21, I've increased it to 23. For five, those were 1 to 24, I bumped it up to 1 to 25. Middle school and high school, those haven't changed. And then I've gone through each of the other programs and created a formula to help support this. And what I'll note here is for the gifted program, I continued to fund the gifted program as the state FTE formula is. Most other districts fund this as one gifted teacher per 17 or 20 FTE. I knew that it was important for us to continue with providing those gifted resources.
I can wait for you.
So then I just go through each category, you've had this in your packet. So if you have any questions about any of these allotments, we can talk through those at the end. But what I wanted to point out is, the principals have flexibility on this. So as Curtis looks at his staffing allotment, he's allotted, like I said, 20, I think somewhere around 22 staff. He can move things around as he wants to. If he's like, well, I actually think instead of this position, I really need this position. So he can move those points as he wants to. But I did create some parameters where teachers, administrators, instructional coaches, the council. Those are weighted equally, so one-to-one. But paraprofessionals, nurses, aides, clerical staff, those are weighted equally, but at the idea that one teacher equals two of the paraprofessionals or two clerks. But there's some minimum guidelines, so I don't also want them to say, well, we don't want any counselors, we need more of this, we're going to take all of our counselors. So we created some guidelines there, some guide rails, so that they have to have some of the minimum staffing allocation. I want to talk a little bit about the game changer staff.
So the formula was, the minimum requirement still come out of the FTE formula. So if a school still says, we need four special teachers at Claremont, so come off of that and the principal finds a different solution.
I did not allocate, so I did, let's talk about the. I did not allocate, so I did, uh, let's talk about the allocation for specials. So special teachers?
Surprise.
Oh, special teachers. So this allows our, our elementarys to rethink a little bit how they schedule specials.
Yeah.
So special teachers typically have a lot of planning time that other teachers don't have. So the way I thought through this was, if we have a, let's, basically we have a five-hour day, there's five hours of instruction in our elementary schools. If all of our teachers get an hour planning, that means these special teachers can teach four classes. So the equation basically is you take your number of homerooms, multiply it by five days of the week, and divide it by twenty, and that gives you how many special teachers you need to fill in all of your segments. So it does decrease, so Claremont goes from four special teachers down to two. But as I said, as we rethink this plan, this gives us a softer runway as we take those special teachers and we say, okay, we know you right now have four, we're going to take two, you're going to get funding for two in your formula, but we're going to keep two on the district roster. So over time, we can figure out how to solve this problem. And this problem might be solved by saying, okay, at the district level, K two schools, art is on Monday at every school. So all of our art teachers go to Westchester on Monday, teach art to all the students. Tuesday, they go to this school. So it may look different going forward, instead of having four teachers, four special teachers at every school. And that's just, that's my proposal, but you know, that's.
And so I think it's important to note for anybody listening, you're not actually talking about reducing the amount of time kids stay in art class.
Yeah.
We're talking about allocating teacher resources in a way that's more efficient so that it's, they look like other.
Yeah, yeah.
But you, but you are talking about decreasing. In, on the other classes, yes, yes, yes.
But not their overall time with the special teachers.
You got it.
Correct, that's what I meant, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So one of the proposals is to take these district rostered staff, and this is just, I came up with this idea after Ms. State did her game, game day presentation, to think of that, how can we think a little more innovatively with the staff that we have on hand? We know we have staff above and beyond what we're funded locally, we have a comfort level with where we, we know we want our class sizes of the district, we have values when it comes to small schools, but we still need to start addressing the. And moving towards that in a slow, thoughtful process. So part of that, and we know we want to pay the educational debt to our historically marginalized students. What we have is working, but can we create an innovative position that can even faster get some results and help the students and meet them where they are and give them what they need? So what this idea is, is we would take some of these district rostered staff and designate them as game changers. And they would still work a hundred and ninety days if they're a teacher, a hundred and eighty-five days if they're a par pro, their salary doesn't change, their benefits don't change, but their work schedule changes a little bit, their daily schedule changes a little bit. During the normal school year, and I'll show you a calendar, they really work four days a week, and they're off on Fridays. That helps, we can do that by how we schedule specials, if they're going to be a special teacher, how we do push-in and pull-out services for EIP students, if they're going to do that. But that gives us those teachers contracted days where they're working summer school, they're working our intercession, they're working our summer school camp. And then I said, I said they have a, a different calendar or a different school day as well. So this is just a snapshot of what it could look like if we build these positions. And this is still just very much an idea of something that we could do to be a little more innovative to support our students with the needs that they have and meet them with what they need as students. So you would see this teacher, this calendar in July, those two weeks in blue, those are our launch pack for learning camps, getting the kids geared up, previewing content, getting them ready to start school with successfully on the second. And then that game changer teacher works four days a week throughout the normal calendar, that week in September, the nineteenth through the twenty-second, that's fall break, so they would work four days over fall break, provide education for our students at that time. So that's kind of this game changer schedule, thinking a little bit differently, how we can support the students and meet the needs. We know we have a hard time finding teachers that want to work intercession, that want to do after-school programs, this helps solve that problem. The other difference for these teachers is they have a different schedule. So the normal day for a teacher to report at, at phase is three fifteen, and seven fifteen is three fifteen. They leave, they go home, we have students that need after-school with students that need tutoring, we have a hard time staffing those positions. So can we rethink the schedule for a staff member so they work from nine fifteen to five fifteen? They've got schedules and assignments, and they're working during the school day, but then they're also providing after-school opportunities for students at no class to the student and at no additional class to our school district. So that is what you might be wanting, what do the game changer teachers do? And again, these are just some ideas that we're starting to formulate if this is where we want to move. So during the normal school day, we want these teachers to attend planning, we want them to keep up with the content that the teachers are teaching in their classrooms so that when they have those students after school, they can accelerate the content by previewing vocabulary words, helping the students understand some of the math concepts before they get into the math classroom. So when they get into the regular classroom setting, they're ready to jump in and learn like they've had this home tutoring all their lives. They can also do some of the push-in or pull-out EIP or REP models, we know those sometimes don't meet every day, so it's thinking creatively with how we build our schedules, providing some innovative special classes or connection classes like the game changer. So can we create some schedules and provide some more innovative opportunities for teachers to create some of those really exciting connections or special classes? And then after school, number one priority would be high intensive tutoring, so really helping the students with identified needs. But also, these teachers can do coaching, they can provide social emotional support opportunities, they can do some leadership work with these students, they can do enrichment with these students, homework help or test retake, pretty much whatever the students that we identify need, they can help with that need. They're already teachers on staff, they know the kids, they know the content, and it doesn't cost us an extra dime. It really, to me, is a, a win-win situation where we can help our students with what they need, instead of building a schedule around our staffing, we're building a schedule and supports for what our kids need.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So for, you said, like, they could run after school, but are they, would they be an act, you know, heading an after-school program with multiple children, or are they only working with the students who've been identified? Work with a game changer?
They would be really just working with those students identified to be game changers. We already have after-school programs. For regular programming, we would let those programs continue as much as needed, and these could really be targeted on providing those supports for the kids that really need that extra time.
Okay, because I was thinking about, because you mentioned we have a hard time staffing after-school programs, and so I don't think like right now they rent for that to active school program. So I didn't know, you know, if this is a solution for that, but it sounds like it's not, it's just to work with these individual students identified, okay? And then, how are the students identified?
We don't know yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was wondering, will they work with students with IEP? I saw EIP and REP, and I was wondering about students that have IEP also.
That's to be determined.
Yeah. And for paraprofessionals, are they, are our paraprofessionals able to work with? I, I was wondering, would it, it seems like it would be a little bit different for paraprofessionals now for certified teachers. I know, so, I don't think that they would be able to do push-in or pull-out without a teacher record there.
Well, where I'm thinking, we do have several EIP paraprofessionals at our schools. So, you know, if we have a, a paraprofessional, I don't want to say they can't do it. They may be paired with a teacher. So it may be an opportunity to use them as well if they want to participate.
Okay. And then my only last thing is that, and I, I bring this up a lot in terms of how we are paying the debt to our marginalized, struggling marginalized students. But see, like, game changers are not working just with black students.
We haven't determined that yet. So that's one of the things to be determined, how do we identify which student would be part of this game changer solution? And if we're saying these are students, or are teachers that would help really work towards our equity work, maybe these could be students of color, maybe this would be a special program for those students.
So how would you identify the, the, the teachers that are technically game changers?
Yeah.
Would they volunteer? You know, talents, people who time adjustments work for them, but then maybe the cohort of students you're looking for is not in their wheelhouse necessarily, so they get moved around, but how would you decide who gets to, who gets that decision?
So first of all, just general interest, are there staff that want to do? Not that we have no teachers, but how do we look at providing these supports in a different way? So first phase is, do we have teachers that are even interested in this? So they, I put a format yesterday, some gathering numbers, I haven't looked at how many people have responded to it with just initial interest. So that's phase one. If there's initial interest, all right, let's take it to the next step. If there's no initial interest, let's kind of figure out what's the next way to move forward with this plan. And then it is, let's identify what does a game changer teacher exemplify? What do we want that teacher to be able to do with students? Do they have to have certifications in certain areas so that it demonstrates certain amounts of cultural responsiveness and awareness that they work with students? So that would be the next phase.
I'm going to go ahead.
So a game changer would be, you know, this alternative schedule and, and working with students with the extra support. Then when a position becomes available, say in Claremont, teachers qualifications match that, then he would go to Claremont to fill a new position.
And that's a possibility, hopefully that won't happen in the middle of the school year, teachers very, you know, we don't have a lot of mid-year teacher turnover, but we know like at the end of the year, two kindergarten teachers are going to not come back, so then we can look at our game changer list at the end of the year and roll those teachers back on to the regular roster.
So first, I, you know, this does look pretty out of the box and creative, and so certainly appreciate that. What I would ask is, as you're, as you're thinking through how to plan it, have some way for us to have a conversation about what constitutes success? And when it, when you would expect to have to pull a plug if it doesn't work, okay? It's, I mean, it's great to be innovative and all about doing that, but we also have to know when it's not working to be able to, to call it a day.
Yeah.
Have you seen or heard elsewhere where this kind of a, a staffing shift has been implemented or used? Have you, have you, yeah?
I haven't.
Okay. Uh, it would be interesting to understand, you know, because we're not certainly the only system having to deal with staffing differences and, you know, that sort of a thing.
Most of the time, people just rest.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's something I'm not comfortable doing with the amazing staff that we have. So I'd rather find a way to gradually get to a point where we are balanced budget versus ripping the Band-Aid off and just saying, sorry, twenty-one teachers, you know?
So is this then, this first bullet point here, is that a steady state or is that in year one?
This is year one, so year one, this phase is twenty-two point four staffing points with reallocating now. When you look at the formula, some of these reallocations are creating other positions so that open other classroom positions. So there is kind of this really odd way that we have to move through this, sometimes take two steps forward, one step back, two steps forward, one step back. It's not a, a linear progress, progression because of some staff may decide to leave over the summer, or we look at our enrollment numbers at Claremont and we added up with thirty more students than we anticipated. So there's a lot of fluctuation in this, that this also allows us that roster of staff that we can say, hey, we're going to take these here and move them here, maybe these twenty-two points come from the teachers that are saying, I'm retiring, I'm finding a new job for next year, I'm not, we're not going to fill those positions. So we're not rehiring twenty-two of the staff members that we have said, that have already indicated they're not coming back.
And so that's on an annual basis, twenty-two staff?
That's about what we would see, yeah.
And so what does a steady state look like? What does this get, this a year and after and the year after? Or is that steady state?
Where's the work and I'll be printing those numbers?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question, what's the administrative intern to K two, K three schools, what is that role?
Um, it's actually an, really what we're called, I've called it an administrative intern, but it's really an elementary assistant principal. So it's adding an elementary assist, assistant principal to every one of our K five, K two schools. There is a need for that, and I'm, you know, Ruth is a testament to that. So, you know, early in the year, I. Then I just said, you're getting one. I see the need, and she has shared how that much that has changed her job and her instructional coach's job, to have an AP at an elementary school who can deal with the managerial, the discipline on a daily basis to provide those supports, so Ruth and Julie.
But why would we call them an administrative intern versus?
I'm switching that name, I'm just going to call them elementary APs. But they have a different, so they would only be contracted two hundred and ten days than it does a two twenty-five at upper level or. There's not as much things to get done over the summer and before school, so it felt like a two-ten contract would be fine for them.
Can you go through the current FTE? I see the proposed for each of these, some FTEs, just formulas, the body of principles, make decisions, so where the staff, so like, K to three classrooms are proposing twenty-three, what is it now?
Uh, twenty, what was it, K three, twenty-three? It really isn't one right now, because we didn't decrease staffing when our enrollment decreased. And last year, we added a lot of teachers to help provide instruction during COVID, and we didn't separate with any of those teachers we added. So I don't know if you remember this, but about January, we hired an influx of teachers so that we could bring kids back and give teachers lower class, and we could keep our class sizes in the school building low, but then we also didn't want to have class sizes of seventy on virtual learning platform. So we hired an influx of teachers last year, Mr. Paulding at, at Tally is one of them. So there were teachers added to our roster mid-year last year, and we didn't, we kept them on. So our class sizes this year are much lower than what we would typically see. It really, that's, it's interesting, we have these, what are they, service level agreements, but really hasn't been a staffing model in the last two and a half years because of COVID and making changes to support them.
Well, and there was a formula, and my initial foray in speaking at the board was that in an attempt to meet that formula at Claremont and Glenwood, it meant that the kindergarten classroom that year had thirty-three students per class in it, because the formula was the same. And then turned out in Claremont was it thirty, and then O first was it seventeen, and when the park was it thirty. And it had to do with the formula, and once you subtract, throw out a principal and a special and a media clerk for a building that is intentionally very small.
Right, yeah.
Tough. And so the service, the, the area level agreement at those schools required a good flexibility, and so I hesitate to say, I'd like to know what it is currently, when you say, we're going to do twenty-three, and I appreciate that we've spent a lot of time talking about the solution to when it, when it raises it. Any, any solution that's cut down the number of staff in a building that's providing instructions would be like dead last of my places to look for saving money. And in a school, so that's. Like that.
Yeah.
That's, I mean, that's where Robert gets the road and being an excellent school district. What's the current FTE for four to five?
Four of them, which is very. Uh, the service level, I'll say the service level agreement that has been in place since twenty-four. That is not the current staffing model.
Just in twenty-four.
Yeah.
And six to eight? That's unchanged.
Right, high school and middle school did not change, because their differences were not.
Yeah, they're very, very small, you see that play out. Definitely, you can make sure you. Two-part question, one, we've had a lot of change over principals. Or is the training that goes into how to deal with FTE, how you're going to use it, how to make sure you're not going to.
Yeah, we have a, a very detailed principal transition list, we walk our principals through this, met with them last week, meeting with them one-on-one as we go through the scheduling.
So my understanding, just correct me if I'm wrong, is send the FTE to Curtis, Dr. O'Malley, and, right here's my percentage, here's my formula, over staff, there are four extra people. And your proposal is, long-term, that's an issue. It's not sustainable, we can't do that. But in the short term, oh my, there's, we are not telling you to fire four people. We are in fact looking for a solution to take four of those people and provide a way for them to be above and beyond to the district as they, and as they transition out, or as they do that, then we will become lighter. That's fair. What would be the response if he says, I can't run my school district, I can't run this building at twenty-three FTE? What are the things?
Right. And that's where this is that soft landing. This is provide that runway to transition. So as he implements this staffing model, he can say, this isn't gonna work. Search my schedule, we'll take a look at it and say, okay, right, we're gonna take you, we're gonna bump you up in this area because you need additional staff there.
I think that's so important to have principals that comfortable speaking up like that.
They do. They all scheduled their meetings with me, yeah.
It also sounds like a point here that you have written is that if a position becomes available and in any school, the principals are supposed to fill from this list first before they start hiring external candidates. So that's a little bit of a, maybe some added protection, if I'm reading this right.
So just looking at the counselor formula, I just wanted to follow up on the number of counselors.
Yeah, so currently, the state allocates one counselor per, I think, 450 students. The guideline from the Counseling Association is 250. So that's what we're gonna staff at, 250 students earn one counselor. We know our elementary schools don't have 200, three of them don't have 250 students. So we are allotting at least one counselor for the school so that they don't have to split and go to different schools. Increases the counseling staff that save by one. Actually, it increases half, another halftime counselor at Tally, I believe. And then at the high school and middle school, they also earn, I think, two more counselors. I have the, I have the numbers all crunched for my principals and they've been working on their sheets. But it does, it significantly increases our counseling staff.
Okay. So yeah, by those numbers, it looks like it would be something like seven, 18 or 19. Say it probably at random, so, okay, okay. That's, that's, and then I have the big question that I'd ask. If we are, there's a couple, a couple of fix, right? Do we know, at least historically, I don't, I don't know exactly where we are now, but historically, we have disproportionately lost teachers of color. We have efforts underway to ensure that we have recruited a diverse staff, but I don't think we got to where we want it to be on that front. And so if effectively we're saying, current teachers are who we're gonna be moving into different positions, and we're gonna manage that through, you know, the term for, you used it a minute ago, but basically the natural attrition, yes, like atrophies, not attrition. How do we ensure that we maintain and actually increase diversity rather than lose it in the teaching staff in that model, right? That's a huge challenge.
It is. And one of the things I'll say as we talk with staff about why they want to, what makes people stay in the caterers? Competitive pay, knowing that they're compensated. Number two, having opportunities for advancement. And the educational, the Leadership Academy class that I started has attracted a lot of staff of colors that want advancement, that want opportunity for growth. And when they see they have that avenue for that, they're staying. This has been, to me, is that do we provide for our staff what they want to see in a school system? And some of it's pay, we get that, and that's why we want to be competitive with pay. But it is staff development, it is feeling supported and seen. It is knowing that they're working in a school system that's dedicated to equity. So we're seeing our numbers sustain when it comes to staff of color more than losing those staff.
Okay, good. And so knowing that basically the pool of staff that we have now is under this model, we aren't bringing in more candidates of, of color. So we have, it's a fixed pool of candidates, right? I just wanna make sure that we're very focused on not sort of lessening that.
Yes, 100%.
I guess that would be something to look at with, with the next look at the model that we've been, we've lost, correct? Or then we really want to move on to the
Yeah, that, when I, when I talked about pulling the plug or tracking certain metrics, that needs to be definitely very much one of them.
So for me, this is a plan that really aligns with our priorities and our goals. Like it says here, saving staffing points, saving money, being good stewards with the money that we have, increasing the counselors that we are providing, that was a budget priority. Also adding equity-focused game changer staff. And this provides a smooth transition to make adjustments as we need to, moving forward. Doesn't rip a Band-Aid off and say, bye, see you later. It says, hey, we're, we're committed to keeping these staff in our school system because they're amazing. And we're gonna, we're gonna keep you. And, you know, just as people retire and as that slow attrition rate, you know, just kind of works its way, we'll be managing that process. Any other board discussions?
I would like to see similar thought and depth in our operating staff as well. So not just taking a look at instructional, I think we need to be talking about a very similar, you know, sort of attrition-based model for a natural reduction in some of our operating costs.
And that, we're, that's part of what we're looking at with that audit, central office audit.
Oh, so central office audits, all functions outside of instructional, okay, okay, good, good.
Every single department is going through that audit.
Okay, great. That, I didn't catch that.
Okay, all right. Next agenda item is board work plan development. And I thought we'd start this with the board self-assessment. What I did is put together just a place for us to, we looked at the self-assessment. It was a lot longer than it was gonna be, which is great. But what I thought we could just kind of go through, kind of give each of the standards a rating like they asked in the sheet. And then what is our top priority to get through this year to work on as a governance team? And then focus on what is the plan for our board moving forward to focus on that, whatever we choose as a team? And let that help guide our calendar conversation. So if we just wanna go through and assess really quickly the standards, just kind of thinking where we are. So under the governance structure, there were four standards in there. Standard A, just kind of wondering where you rated our, our governance team. Is that satisfactory, needs improvement, or not sure? To me, this was at least satisfactory.
Yeah.
Standard B, we execute our duties as defined in the Constitution, the laws, the board, the rules. If we were doing what we're supposed to do. I thought, yeah. The board acts as a policy body, separate from the responsibilities authorized to the superintendent.
Oh, I think
Okay. Yeah, okay. Okay, governance leadership team demonstrates a unified approach to the govern, governing our school system. I would actually even say, if there was higher than satisfactory here. Strategic planning, the governance team provides input and adopts a system strategic plan.
I'm not entirely convinced of that. I actually think there's some opportunity of strategic planning. And some of this is overhanging from before, so it's not necessarily reflective of the direct. But, but I would like to have a better understanding of what has changed. Because it has been, I know it's been unbelievable head months. And so trying to get an understanding of where we are on that. I'm not saying that it's not satisfactory. I am saying that I think that's an area that I would like to explore.
I think this is, for me, this is a growth area for the governance team. There was a very rigorous strategic plan developed several years, I think, when Tasha first came on board. When I was hired in the district four years ago, it kind of got shuffled in the drawer, kind of left behind. And then that's when we started working on the three pillars and our instructional framework and brought that back. But it hasn't really been, it's been a very internal staff process. Not as well informed by the board on what the board wants to see for a strategic planning process for the school system. So for me, this is one of the growth areas to get the governance team really focused in on adopting a very systemic strategic plan. What does everyone else think? I would, I would say, yeah, and I, neither. Annually, as needed, utilizing, and this one, I think, follows suit with it being
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's second to the prior.
Yeah. Community relations, develop a process to create cultural work input and thought and heard.
I think we're, keeping the processes doing that, right? We're trying to do that now.
I think it's satisfactory. I think, I think people feel comfortable reaching out to contacting board members. And I think, you know, the board does a great job of responding in one way or another.
Yeah, and you have district publications.
The bulletin board. I would say B would also be satisfactory. B.
So I, I think communication is an area where we can improve. I don't know if that's the bucket to go into.
More as a governance team. You're really focused on the role of the governance team in that communicating the work of the governance team.
I understand. I think, so, yeah, I hate to say that it's not satisfactory, but I know, I, I would like us to have, we recently had a conversation about our communication. And we kind of ad hoc came up with, and, and so I think that that worked. But I would be more comfortable if we had kind of a clear way to think about it and something to, do you know what I'm saying? Rather than it, I don't know what I'm saying. I think having, having sort of a framework for when, we talked about when it's appropriate and when it's not appropriate. Had it been, we ended up sort of like as an opinion around the group coming into that conclusion. But I would like to have a little bit more structured of a way to say, you know what? This meets our criteria for when a communication is important. This doesn't meet our criteria for when a communication needs to go out. Do you see what I'm saying? Like something that helps us think through it a little bit more when that comes up.
I mean, you kind of shake the expectations of I think that that's probably some of what the breakdown is. Because communication was different from, you know, Dr. Furman's Friday follow-up and communication from the teachers. Kind of looking and feel different from us. And so maybe crafting some things where the public is clear about what we can communicate about and what we can't.
We have the monthly
The bulletin.
Bulletin.
That's what I was thinking about.
Yeah. We have the monthly bulletin, usually right after a board meeting. So then there's some follow-up to whatever was in the board meeting in case anybody missed it or additional.
But the understanding of that is like the expectation, right? So that the community knows, you know, this is, this is the way that we can and will communicate. This is what won't be said, so this is what will come out of the bulletin.
I also, I also think that there are different communications, right? So I do think the bullets are great because that's sort of an ongoing, this is what just happened, this is how to stay on top of things. But what we were dealing with was kind of a, I don't wanna call it a crisis, but we were dealing with something that was ad hoc and not sort of pre-planned. And that's a different style of communication than a bullet, you know, like in the bullets from a board meeting.
I don't know if there's any way to really anticipate when we'll take the way that we did it is probably the way we'll because we don't, is it something that can just be communicated in the one monthly newsletter as a informative? Or is it, no, this is kind of special, this is different, we need to give this particular subject some special attention? We may not know that, and so
Well, I think communicating about the process with those board members at all to each other and to the community is important. And we have done a much better job of that thing. This is what we're thinking, this is what we're doing, this is what we're actually doing. I think you spoke about both of them, yes and no. Where we could improve is, something Han said to me is, like, let's say you wanna ask the legal questions. Like crisis is coming, I have a question for our attorney, let me call Jana, okay, she's on board, let me call Sasha, she's on board. And I communicated him, like, if they are both on board, quit wasting time calling me. As a process, call the lawyer and tell me later if it meets the definition of crisis. And just having that written somewhere under the community, like, hey, you're asking HR questions. The school board does not comment on HR questions. It would be incredibly inappropriate, in fact. Yes, in fact, in fact, create further problems if we got involved in that. Then sort of like expectation communication, I think, or what's missing. I don't know how to communicate them, but both of those, both internally, like how we communicate and then
Are those, are those
I think those are more norms. So that's what I'm wondering is, we, we say this is satisfactory but needs improvement? And we can work on it with our norm?
We gave, we, we gave this, well, I mean, we gave this community a transparent communication, and this was done it last week.
We did. So to go back to the beginning, I think we're doing a great job of telling them what we're doing and how we're doing, how we're doing.
But isn't that what this, this is saying, it says?
But I'm not sure.
The governance leadership team and individual members' communications demonstrate transparency of intention, actions, decisions, successes, progress to achieving of goals and performance targets.
So I'm on B.
That would, that would be?
You're right. It's trying to be, develop a policy that ensures that that effective communication.
Yeah, I think we did it a little bit ad hoc and it came out well. I would like to spend a little bit of time putting a policy around it, is what I'm saying.
Well, it's about, you know, I had, I skipped that big part, that's what I was saying, it sounds like a policy, but that's what I was talking about. That's an element for standard.
So I'm gonna say it's okay, but it needs work. Add it to our ratings field here. It could be better. All right. How about C on that for community?
I mean, it kind of
That's what I was
All right, too.
Policy development. This is one that, for me, really sticks out because our current board policy is missing a lot in its alignment with state laws, particularly type of 20. So I think we really need to take a close look at this one, that board policy. And if we wanna keep on with the current board policy, we've gotta really ramp it up with the support that will enhance that. So I don't know if it needs improvement here.
We're talking about priority in a bit, right?
Yeah, yeah. I wanted to see what, whittle it down to what are our needs improvement areas and then prioritize. Board meetings. I'll do a great job with that. Personnel. Definitely not a good superintendent sitting here. You guys evaluate me. Have policy that's implemented by the superintendent. That policy needs some work, but it's there. Financial governance.
I mean, I, yeah, we're in the process of that, yeah.
Apple policies, yeah, yep. And ethics, definitely. Okay, so our needs development areas are policy development, overall, and then some with the community relations.
And, and really honestly, in the community relations, there was, it was kind of a polit, like what is our policy for it, right? And so I do
Not that we're not doing it, but how do we, how do we have a
Sure.
structure.
Yeah.
So the question would be, what is the first hurdle we wanna jump over, policy or strategic planning? You can see both sides. I'm kind of curious on what the board is thinking on this, whether one comes before the other, vice versa.
I would think strategic planning.
I have a very strong opinion about this.
Needs to polish and they develop some policy from there.
Mission, vision, strategy, policy. You've got, you've kind of gotta go in that process to get it right until, yeah, I'm, I'm into the alignment.
And I think that's also the best way for us to figure out how we're gonna push that.
Are we all comfortable with strategic planning being our number one priority?
Yeah.
And for now, I'll put this as number two. And if we finish with this one, we can start tackling the next one. Okay, so that leads us to calendar discussion. Okay, so that leads us to calendar discussion. And before we did that, one of the.
Actually, I'm sorry, I'm sorry not to jump ahead, but, but I, I don't want to give short shrift to the fact that we aren't actually compliant, so when we say number one and number two, it's not do number one, and if you have time, let's overdo number two. I think it's, we're gonna have to do one and two.
Yeah, but it's like, can't, it'll be, we have to get through strategic planning.
First.
First, unless you all want to quit your jobs and come work full-time. So we've got to bite one, we've got to eat the elephant one bite at a time.
Okay.
So we'll get there. It's not that we're not doing it, it's, we've got to.
It's just a order.
Yeah, exactly. So along with that is, one of the handouts in your challenge when your packet was a really flushed out agenda items, where it lists the dates and then agenda items, and it goes through all the policy monitoring reports. I'm interested in the board's take on, if we know we're eventually gonna rework policy, do we want to go through these rigorous policy monitoring reports where we're interpreting and analyzing the current policy, coming to an agreement on it, and then moving forward with monitoring? Are we okay reporting on our district improvement plan as kind of our measures of success, like the staffing plan assessment that we do, the, the personnel report that Adina does once a year? So are we okay with moving forward with that kind of accountability? Or is the board looking for more, sticking more to these policy monitoring reports and interpreting the policy if we know we're eventually gonna relook at policy?
I would like for us, and I don't know if this is, kind of, that conversation, but I would like for us to look at a different policy governance model, something that GSBA can support us with. It's been a really, for me, as, you know, new board member, after years, getting a hold of what those reports were supposed to look like, and there was so much up to interpretation. And so, that's, I guess I'm adding something else to one of our calendars, but I would really like GSBA to meet with GSBA and talk to them about, you know, what they would recommend. And so, maybe for now, my suggestion would be to move forward with reporting on the things that you just mentioned, and then plan to meet with GSBA to get more information about policy ma, policy models that they, governance models that they support.
I would agree with that. I think, I think it would go so back, so back and forth every meeting, on the interpretation and this and that, and, so, I don't really know if, full understanding of what you would be presenting to us anyway, and, and it takes a lot of work from your staff to do that and then to go back with all the notes, and so, you know, if you bring up what we, what we need to be working for, what, what information needs to be updated, so we can get that space where we really put it in from a, where, that everybody can understand and follow together.
Give you a concrete example of exactly what Susan was saying. We got a presentation on the strategic plan from Dr. Huddleston, and I felt like half the time was spent fixing where it fit into the box group on that giant presentation where we kept chasing it, to discuss how it was being done. That's, that, that stinks, that's unfortunate.
And that's where I think if we develop a strategic plan and let that lead into the policy, that strategic plan will inform what we're gonna monitor through policy governance, right?
So it does really all roll in together and not necessarily feeling like we're adding more to our place, but it's actually, it's like, yeah.
So, I would, I'm, I'm comfortable with that on two conditions. I think one is, let's just make sure there isn't some state level compliance thing that we have to do, like, let's make sure that whatever we do get meets whatever the basic compliance is that we need to have from the state, so that we're not missing anything. And then the other is, let's kind of bound by time how long we're comfortable not having policy of it. Like, so I think, like, if it's gonna take us two years, that's too long. I think we need to, we need to kind of say, we'll be done by this date and have something kind of in its place. And I don't know what that number is, because I don't know how long it's gonna take, but I think we want to make sure that we commit clearly to everyone that we're gonna be done at this point and be able to have that accountability when we.
Picking the policy, well, picking the, picking what we, the, the path we choose to take will, it will just be a matter of, will we have to relearn, or will some of us, I don't know whether it's a, this will be kind of three for two, but will we have to relearn how we can do a thing, what kind of, and that may take some time, but this, but, you know, I don't think making a decision actually, or anything should.
And I, you know, I was hoping that maybe we could ask if GSBA could come to our retreat.
They will, yeah.
Oh, yeah, there's many ways, I have to look at the, the hours, and that could be what they, their half of, of the, the retreat could be on that.
Is it worth asking them to help us with some structure on thinking through the strategies?
That was gonna be my recommendation. They do strategic planning and board policy reviews. What I was wondering too is I can reach out to GSBA and say, hey, we know we need to tackle both of these, is there a way to bring both of them together in a strategic way for us to kind of move through that process, one to the, and one to the next?
I'm much more comfortable with that, right, right. Because I, I don't, like, leaving policy sort of open-ended when we get to it, I'm a little uncomfortable with that, but if we have a clear plan, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, so that takes us to calendar. So there's, there's two in there. One is the list of the dates, and then the one that, this is one. We made some corrections, and also wanted to just really flush out a couple things for the board so that we have very clear timelines as we move forward with board meetings. So that first column, and look at this, the one that's the landscape with what's set the date on. So the first one is obviously the date of the meeting. One of the things that I wanted to propose to the board for consideration, and this would be approved at the next, at the February 8th meeting, if it's in agreement, is that we set dates for when board members could add items to the agenda. It's far out enough that if staff has to repair, prepare a report, we have time to do that. And then the other caveat, I think that I would recommend to the board, is that if, you know, Carla wants to add something, but none of the other four, four board members care about it, she needs a second. So, having a process where it's not just one board member constantly putting things on the agenda, it's at least two. And then I've listed the dates that I have to chair and vice chair meetings, there's three columns, I want to make sure I get times in for when I do the individual review with each of the other three board members, and then we have when the agenda's finalized. That way, everyone knows it's finalized on this date, it gets published the following date, so it's ready to go out. Now, some of the dates are weird because of where, where the district's closed, when staff is on, so some of them seem like really off. But as you look at, like, let's say that July, that's the first meeting, July 12th, deadline for submitting agenda items would be the 17th, because of when we close for summer break. And then we come back from break, so July 7th would be the meeting, and there's flexibility, but we want to go ahead and try to calendar these out as best we can. And my other question was, do the individual, the three other board members, are you guys comfortable with your individual agenda meeting being the day before the board meeting? Or would you like to back those up a little bit? To make sure you've got time and are prepared.
I would like my, the day before.
Before the day?
Before the day, not before the day, earlier.
Like the Friday before?
Friday before, but, okay, yeah.
I was okay with it. I think I came in with questions that I needed to ask, so it made it so faster that they.
You're good with that day before?
Yeah, but I don't want to make you do multiple days, so it's better.
It doesn't matter, actually. For me, I just calendar out my time and this is what it is.
I'm fine with it.
Okay, and then I'll just work with the three of you to iron out a time that's, that's working. I know that time worked for you, but, you know, I'll just reach out to you individually and get that time ironed out.
When do we know, like, do, I have to ask the question correctly. Four things that we know we have to plan a fair bit of time in advance, like getting the DEF to present or DHA to present, like, when, when would we know or have kind of a calendar of that sort of laid out, so it's not ad hoc each month, but that we sort of can look ahead and say, okay, we're talking to.
So what I think we could do is just start a list of the day, like I, like, as you see on this kind of app, flushed out agenda, there's already kind of a regular schedule for when we have certain things come up on the agenda. So we, I'll flush this out more now that the dates are finalized, and that can be, we don't have to vote on that, but we can start calendaring that out. So start making a list, like if you want to hear from DEF annually or DHA annually, make a list, and then what we'll do is make sure that we're not overloading meetings and having three-hour meetings we can.
Okay.
And I just wanted to, um, keep that case, because, you know, I, we, I would think that we didn't have a meet in December, I think, the past, my first camera, where we didn't need to December.
We don't have a work session.
Okay.
I have one other suggestion for the board to consider, is, you know, we, right now we're doing the second Tuesday and the fourth Tuesday. Many other school districts do it all on one day. So they start with their work session, like, so we've got exec session at 5:30, they would start the work session at 4:00, go for the work session for an hour and a half, roll into exec session. It's a longer day, but then it's one day instead of two separate days for the board, so I'm just curious on your appetite for that. What I like about that is it very easily can let us roll things onto the consent agenda for the board meeting and have those discussions here. So just throwing that out there for your consideration, I wonder what you'll think.
So doing work section, work session, exec session, and board meeting, all kind of like back-to-back?
That's what most school districts do, yeah.
I don't particularly like that.
Okay.
And it's funny, because a lot of other boards would like to do it the way we do it.
Oh, really? Okay, I wasn't sure.
Only because it is such, it's such a lot, a whole day.
Yeah, it is.
But I'm just wondering if, say, from 4:00 to 5:30 would be enough time, because I feel like most work sessions, our work sessions typically are about two hours.
Yeah, yeah.
At least. I mean, this one, you know.
This one is over two hours.
Yeah, we gotta, we're getting it earlier, but even just our typical morning, two hours. I, I, I'm agnostic on it, I think you can do it either way. I think sometimes, when, at least in my personal experience, when I'm scheduling meetings and they're back-to-back, it forces you to stay on task. So, you know, if you only get a certain amount of time to talk, you only have a certain number of agenda items, if you don't get to it, it rolls over, so you have to prioritize a little bit better, but I think, you know, either way is fine. But, you know, I think, especially with Zoom calls, we've gotten into the habit of just letting meetings go and go and go. Either would work for me.
I'd certainly be willing to entertain trying it, maybe once, maybe certainly like July, blocking them for one day in July as opposed to two.
That looks over the summer, it's good.
Like, where there's gonna be lighter agendas? Yeah, I'm, I'm open to lighter agenda, I just.
You're so funny.
I think you can do it.
If we're doing the board meeting right now, I, so.
How about we get June, July, that way, and then kind of see how we feel about it and, you know, if we want to continue it for, we can, if not, it's your meeting and, you know, my desire is to make the meeting work for the, you know, what the board wants.
And then this, they don't line up with this.
Correct, yeah. We made some changes after we started plugging them in on the calendar, and I looked at, oh.
These are correct?
Yeah. So this is what I will bring to the board to vote on at the February. And that is all I have for the board this evening. Chair, would you like to adjourn the meeting?